This thing goes off occasionally.
What was happening to you? You're done.
That's what they joked about in exit issues that somebody talked to.
Call the meeting to order, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Mary Beth.
Nelson.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Wunschel.
Here.
Hanson.
Here.
Bulk.
Here.
Nelson.
Larson.
Re, Orison, sorry.
Here.
Ree.
Okay. Item three on the agenda tonight, we have a couple of presentations. First, up to the mic will be Bob Rose.
I didn't realize this was a presentation, but...
Well.
I'm here and I'm presenting, I guess that's what it means.
That's right.
Well, I asked the mayor last week if I could come and address the council and all of you people up there who had such a great part in naming a day for me. I think I was so overwhelmed and flabbergasted on the night it happened that I didn't properly thank you. And I wanted to come and take this opportunity to say a very, very special thanks. I am so grateful. It was an outstanding day. And one of the outstanding things that happened, received a call from Great Lakes Communication a couple of days before. And the request was, we have about three groups of our employees, we're going to split into three groups. We want to go to three different places on your special day, in your honor, and do some community service work. Oh my goodness, it was another overwhelming moment. So, we agreed on three places. VFW doing a little remodel work and they had some wrap-up work to do. People for Pets, always looking for volunteers. They were out walking the dogs and the dogs enjoyed it, I'm sure, as did the people. And the final place they went was the YMCA and just doing a little spring cleaning and cleanup. All because of my day, which you guys were responsible for. So it created 50, 60 hours of community service work in the community. So I am just so overwhelmed with gratitude and I am so fortunate that I just wanted to come back and say thank you once again. Words are not enough to describe my gratitude, but I guess until you're better paid, that's going to have to do. And I'll keep thinking of things the way I can return the favor. So, thank you very much, I appreciate it, it was a wonderful day, thank you.
Thank you, Bob, and thank you again for your service to our community. It is certainly much appreciated and has been much appreciated over the years, thank you. Okay, second, item 3B, we have Brandon Brown, who's the maintenance and environmental manager for Simrise.
Well, that one's going to be tough to beat. So my name is Brandon Brown, as Mr. Steve mentioned, I'm the regional engineering manager for Simrise. And more specifically, I control the project that we have going on at my site in Spencer with the odor issue, wastewater issue, et cetera. Back in January, you guys asked us to have that cover on the EQ tank installed by April 15th. As of Friday, the vendor that controls that lovely cover, they are behind. So, the cover is in one of the ports in Houston, Texas, right now. It's not going to be released until, well, it's actually not going to start the process of being released, going through customs until about May 6th, which means it will not be at my site until May 15th, which is a Monday. So that puts me about a month behind on the original request. Frankly, I'm here just to let you know that we've been pushing and trying extremely hard. I did try to get this shipment expedited a little bit sooner, that did not work out. Customs turned it down. So the best bet for us right now is we will see it on the 15th and then we will start installation. Tarsco's still planning on about a five-day window, so by that Saturday, which should be the 20th, we should be complete. And then the temporary carbon filter that would be on the vent side of that dome will be installed as well. The second phase to that is Biorem Environmental. They are going to install a, basically a odor remediation box. Picture like an eight-by-eight box that is full of filtration membranes, filters, et cetera. And then that would be phase two. The third step to that is the carbon polisher that McClure Engineering asked us to install. And that would be step three. So basically, what I'm getting at is, by the time we get that cover installed, it'll be that weekend, that following week, Biorem is supposed to come out onsite and get set up with their portion of the project to begin. There's going to be seven guys with Tarsco for the cover portion. I don't want everybody on top of one another, so that's going to be probably mid to the end of May before that's complete. And then from there, we'll start the wastewater portion. If it's possible, if you guys see fit for an extension, we would greatly appreciate it. I understand this has been a thorn in everybody's side for the last year that I've been with the company. So if not, we understand, but I figured it would be best if I came up here and let you guys know where we are. Do y'all have any questions?
So where is this cover being manufactured, this should be in ship?
So originally, it was supposed to be manufactured in Oklahoma. And unfortunately, Tarsco got their wires crossed and it wound up being built in Spain.
Okay.
So that's the reason for the...
Customs, yeah, so, okay.
Brandon, you talked about phase one, and then you talked about phase two and phase three. And phase one, you said May 20. And what were the dates on the other two phases?
So at this point, the best bet would probably be the 20th second that Biorem would start shipping everything to us.
Okay.
By this Friday, we should get another update from Biorem and Sambatec to verify that. And then the following Monday, I'll send all that information to Adam, where we are.
Okay. Any other questions, comments for Brandon at this point? Brandon, I appreciate you coming in tonight. Appreciate you being straightforward with us and letting us know where everything stands at this point.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Good information, thank you very much. Okay, moving on, item four is the consent agenda. And we have one alteration to the consent agenda. Item D, we are going to move item D to the public hearings portion of the agenda. So that will now be item 5B5. The item 5B5, okay? So, that said, we'll move on with the consent agenda. Item A is a motion to approve city council minutes of March 20, 2023. B, licenses, approved Class B retail alcohol license for Hy-Vee gas, subject to final approval by the Iowa ABD. C is a motion to approve residential tax abatement application for Charlotte Carlson, 829 Second Avenue Southeast, IGL Construction, 3216 West Third Street, and 3219 West Third Street. And we'll move on to E, a motion to approve computer replacement purchase for city administration, fire department, cemetery, landfill, parks, and street department with solutions for $25,131.53. This is a CIP item. F is a motion to approve recycle bin decal replacement project for solid waste recycling containers from SS Collision, Cycle, and Graphics for $14,076.50. This is also a CIP item. G is a motion to approve MLS landscape and design Dakota Traffic Services LLC and KW Electric as subcontractors for the 2023 Eastside Reconstruction and Sewer Separation Project. H is a resolution to provide for a notice of hearing on proposed plans and specifications, form of contract, estimate of cost for 2023 Woodland Avenue Culvert Replacement Project, letting date April 20, 2023, hearing and potential award of contract, May 1, 2023. And I is a motion to approve solid waste purchase of two 30 cubic yard roll-off containers from Elliott Equipment Grimes Iowa for $13,414. This is a CIP item as well. Entertainer motion at this time.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Donovan.
My Ben Tracy, but...
Trace?
I'll second it.
Okay. Tracy got the second, okay, sorry about that. Okay, any discussion? Please vote by machine.
Nelson, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Bulk?
Aye.
Orison?
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved. Item five, we have a couple of public hearings. A is a public hearing on proposed City of Spencer maximum property tax levy for fiscal year July 1, 2023 to June 30, 2024. I declare the public hearing now open. Are there any written comments against?
We have none, Mayor.
Any oral comments against? Any written comments in favor of?
We have none.
Any oral comments in favor of? I declare the public hearing now closed. Item 5A1 is a resolution approving the maximum property tax dollars for budget year July 1, 2023 to June 30, 2024.
I'll make a motion.
Mayor, I'll make that resolution.
Okay, motion made by Bill.
I'll second it.
Second by Ron. And Brian, would you like to just explain to the public, I know you do this every year, but I think it's a good refresher for us, why we have to do this and what we're doing here?
So, the purpose of this hearing is to try to make our process more transparent in the amount of dollars that we're asking for taxes. So, public hearing was scheduled, and so if you noticed the notice in the paper, it would show the difference between, based on our regular valuation and how that changes if we did not... What would happen to the levy if we ask for the same amount of dollars as we did last year? And then it shows the dollars that we're asking for for fiscal year '24. And so, when you look at it, if we had changed, if we did not ask for any additional dollars, we would have, our levy would have gone from $12.13 down to $12.10. But based on the number of dollars we're asking for, which in dollar-wise is a 1.15% increase in dollars, the tax rate is $12.23. I will caution, that is not going to be the final rate that the council will approve with the budget because it does not include all levies that are included here. It's mandated by the state that only certain levies are part of this hearing and notice and does not include, for mainly, the debt service levy is the big one that's not included. So, when you see the notice and stuff, the rate there is not the final tax levy, but it's the, as part of this process. The big reason for the, the biggest component of the increase is liability, property, and self-insurance costs. As we noticed last meeting when we approved our property renewal, that was up. And so we've increased that for next year as well. And that's where it saw the biggest dollar-wise from about $153,000 to $218,000 for fiscal year '24. The rest of it was all some decreases and otherwise smaller, you know, not big adjustments. So that's why we were at 1.15%.
Okay, any questions or any discussion? If not, please vote by machine. We did, yeah.
Bill and Ron.
Yeah, Bill and Ron.
Nelson, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Bulk?
Aye.
Orison?
Aye.
Okay, the resolution carries. Item 5A2 is a motion setting a public hearing for City of Spencer budget for fiscal year July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2024, for April 17, 2023.
Paul, will you introduce that?
Motion made by Bill.
And I'll also second it.
Second?
Okay, Brian's got it.
Brian got the second. Any discussion? Please, are all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Item 5B is a public hearing on plans, specifications, form of contract, estimate of cost for construction of the 2023 East 15th Street Tennis Court project. I declare the public hearing now open. Any written comments against?
We have none.
Any oral comments against? Any written comments in favor of?
We have none, Mayor.
Any oral comments in favor of? I declare the public hearing now closed. Item 5B1 is a resolution finally approving and confirming plans, specifications, form of contract for the 2023 East 15th Street Tennis Court project.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Donovan. Second by Tom. And Jim, do you want to talk about this, or should we wait for you to come up and talk about this on the next one?
Let's wait.
Okay. I think that'd be a good idea. Okay. Okay, any discussion? Please vote by machine.
Nelson, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Bulk?
Aye.
Orison?
Aye.
Okay, resolution passes. Item two, so Jim will now review the bids that we did receive last Thursday on March 30.
Good evening, I assume you all had a bid tabulation in your packets. You can see we received three bids, which is three more than we received the last time we took bids. So we got a bid from Parkway Construction from T, South Dakota, PCC Sports from Lee Summit, Missouri, and Woodruff Construction from Spencer. There was a correction from the bid as read for PCC Sports, and I think I sent you an email describing that. Basically, what they did is they used a square foot price on a square yard item. So they were off by a factor of nine. Don and I discussed it, basically, our contract is a unit price contract. And so the contract amount is really based on the unit price times the number of units. I talked to the contractor and he knew right away what he did. But he also agreed that they'd stand behind the bid and they'd perform the work for the unit price as bid. And so, their bid ended up being $529,117.10. So, that was in the city's favor. And I would say that in checking on them, PCC Sports, they build sports complexes. They do a lot of different types of sports complexes, but they do an awful lot, or he said the majority of the work they do is the post-tension concrete. So that's, you know, exactly what we're looking for, somebody with a lot of experience. They self-perform all the work, in other words, they put up the, they set up the concrete, pour the concrete, finish the concrete, put on the special surfacing, the plain surface, and they erect the fence themselves. So, they do it all and in pretty quick order. They don't have a lot of projects ready to go this spring. They have a couple down south they were going to do, and then they're going to move up here. So I would say, you know, Mayor June will probably see them. You know, that was in a phone conversation, so they hadn't much time to program it into their schedule, but it sounded like they'd be able to get at it pretty quick. You know, the two bids were pretty close, you know, the one $548 and the other one $529. So I think that kind of establishes the value of the project. You know, our estimate was low, I was $465. But it's just hard to find current bid tabs, you know, in the last couple of years in our area. Prices have gone up and that's reflected, and I think that's kind of reflected in their maybe willingness to do the work for the lower number. I think there's some room in there. And, but all in all, I guess we would recommend award of the contract to PCC Sports in the amount of $529,117.10. Any questions?
Any questions for Jim? Not sure if this is... Okay, Bill and then Donovan, okay?
I think for the public standpoint, because this is a new location, I think it would be important to at least summarize what's going to happen with the courts that are on Fairview.
Okay.
I don't know. I mean, I've been instructed to do anything with the old courts. I'm not sure we do know, at this point, for sure what we want to do. You've got some options. You know, one is to remove them completely, and you could probably do that in-house. I don't know how efficiently, it's quite a bit of concrete and asphalt to get rid of.
Simply ask the question to make sure the public is aware that they're going to be there, but they may not be repaired.
Right.
There's no, right, there's nothing in this project to address anything to do with Fairview.
Yeah, this is just for the construction of the new courts on a new location.
Right, so this is four, there's four individual courts in a bank with a perimeter fence, 10-foot perimeter fence, we've got a sidewalk around three sides. It's located on East 15th Street, that's the street just north, on the north side of the middle school on the east side of town, and it's just off the end of that. If you're familiar with, like, where they have a practice field for the middle school, it's on the north end of that practice field. So they'll be able to utilize school parking for this facility.
Yeah, and I think it's also important that we address the public with the fact that if we approve the 2080 agreement, if we approve this project, which I'm sure we will if we do, but it will be a joint project between the school and the city on this. So, yes, even though it's $529,000, we will be sharing that cost with the schools.
Right.
So Jim, on this kind of concrete, what can we expect for a life expectancy on something like this?
Well, they'll tell you 50 years, you know, the, and that, you know, there's a lot of factors and things are changing in the ready-mix industry, you know. They keep changing the powder, the cement powder, the grind and the composition. It's now, you know, the federal government has been pushing the cement industry to, you know, improve their environmental footprint. And so now we're adding lime, they add lime to the cement, powder, the actual cement powder. And so that, that material hasn't been around a long time. It's just making its way into, you know, all the ready mixes, and that's all that's available now. So, you know, in essence, it should last as long as, and the manufacturers are telling us that that's not a detriment, you know, to adjust the mix. But as long as the concrete's good, it should last that long period of time. The difference here is, again, it's post-tension, so it's got cables in it that are squeezing it, keeping it together. You know, it's the cracks in the joints that deteriorate, you see that in the streets, you know. The middle of the slab seems pretty good, and then there's a rut right around, you know, on some of the streets now, all four sides of a slab of concrete. And here, those joints are held tight, that keeps the surfacing intact, and that kind of keeps it weatherproof. It's the weather that, you know, deteriorates our concrete. So, I think the 50-year is probably a safe bet.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Jim? Yeah, Donovan?
Has anybody reached out to the school with the difference in price from estimated to just verify that the school's still on board on everything going in on this? Has anybody confirmed that with the school?
Yeah, the school was at the bid opening, Jason's here tonight, and they were in favor of it. That, or that, and then I had spoken with Terry Heeman last Wednesday and stuff right before the bid opening to see where they were comfortable with, so.
And I was not here on Thursday for the bid opening, but I did talk to Terry on Friday and asked him about the bid, and he was comfortable with the bid and the school participating.
All right.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Any other questions, comments, discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Bill.
Having been in the Phoenix Valley here for a couple of weeks, I found out that almost all, in all homes, of course, they're all slapped down here, all the homes probably for the last 20 years are put on post-tension concrete. So the product's been around a long time.
Okay. And from what I understand too, with regard to the post-tension concrete and the conversations at the park committee meetings and park board meetings, Spirit Lake, I believe, has courts that are post-tensioned concrete and, what, 15 to 20 years old, and they're in great shape. So, I think this is, you know, something that, you know, if you're going to do it, you may as well do it right. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilman Bulk.
Thank you. Question for Brian. Brian, can you walk us through how we're going to cover the additional approximately $150,000 overage from our CIP budget?
The difference I have is about $90,000, because we had $175,000 in the current once it was upped there. Then, based off the half of the construction, so probably with engineering, we might be closer to that $125, whatever. Any of that would come from our capital funds. As you know, we, I would have said it would have come from the Park Reserve, but as we've redone the CIP process, the Park Reserve will no longer be a viable fund, and so it'll all come out of capital funds.
Does that answer your question, Brian?
It does, thank you.
Thank you.
And one final thing for the public out there, there will, this will be a pickleball court too, correct?
Right, there's a dual-use facility, there's a really pickleball court, striped, at least four.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
That's actually a, a good point, just to make sure that the public understands that these are public courts.
Yes.
Even though they're being located at the school.
Yeah, that's, that's a really good point, Tom, thank you. And I think in the agreement, uh, it's spelled out how the, the time is managed for those courts. The school obviously, uh, will be able to have tennis meets and tennis practices during tennis season on those. They'll also be available to the school at times for PE classes and things like that. But, um, that will all be worked out, and, and I think that it'll be a benefit to both the, the school and the community. And, and we have Jason here from the school. Would you like to say anything, Jason, before we take a vote on this?
Well, I'd just like to say that, um, from talking with Terry at the schools, that this has been a project that's been on the books for a number of years. I'm glad that we have finally brought this thing to fruition, and we're getting some tennis courts, and I think it's going to be a great thing for, um, all of our active community on, um, both ends of the spectrum. So it'll be a good thing for everybody. So, appreciate it, thank you.
Thanks, Jason. Well, we've just about hit everybody in the room, I think, with this, so, okay. If no other comments, please vote by machine. I thought we had a motion. I thought Donovan and Tom, didn't we?
Yeah.
Plans and specs, okay, I'm sorry. Just, thank you, I just got the cart a little ahead of the horse, but that happens in city government, you know. Yeah. No, 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 no. No, we, we're going to, we're gonna go down to, uh, uh, item four. Three or four, we have, we, I'll either entertain a motion to table action, or I will, uh, entertain a resolution awarding the contract for the 2023 East Fifteenth Street Tennis Court Project to PCC Sports from Lee's Summit, Missouri, for, in the amount of five hundred and twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars and ten cents. Thank you for, uh, getting my horse and cart correct here. Motion made by Tom. Second by Tracy. Any discussion? Now we can vote by machine.
Nelson, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Bulk?
Aye.
Orison?
Aye.
Okay, the resolution passes. Now is the additional, uh, item on this particular, uh, space on the public hearing, and it would be a resolution approving the 2080 agreement with Spencer Community School District for the tennis court project.
I'll make a motion that we join in an agreement with them.
Motion made by Ron.
Second.
Second by Donovan. Any discussion? Please vote by machine.
Nelson, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Bulk?
Aye.
Orison?
Aye.
Okay, the resolution is approved. Uh, item six, old business, uh, resolution approving contract and performance bond for 2023 North Y Gateway Improvements Project. Make that motion. Motion made by Donovan. Second by Tom. Any discussion? Please vote by machine.
Nelson, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Bulk?
Aye.
Orison?
Aye.
Resolution carries. Item seven, under new business, item A is a motion to approve renewal of City of Spencer Group Health Insurance Plan with Iowa Government Healthcare Plan. It's a two-point-eight percent increase effective July one, 2023.
I'll make a motion that we approve that group health.
Motion made by Ron. Second by Tom. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item B is a motion to approve professional services contract with Cruz, Kate, and Nelson PC for 2023 crack seal and joint sealing project, seven thousand eight hundred dollars. Twenty-twenty-three PCC patching project, sixteen thousand five hundred dollars. Twenty-twenty-three Spencer Seal Coat Project, six thousand eight hundred dollars. Twenty-twenty-three manhole rehab project, eleven thousand five hundred dollars. Twenty-twenty-three sanitary sewer lining project, twenty-three thousand dollars. And twenty-twenty-three intake replacement project, nine thousand dollars. Motion made by Tom. Second by Donovan. And Mark White, would you like to just come up to the mic? I know these are pretty, uh, much things that we take care of on a routine basis every summer, but can you explain to the public exactly what this is?
Certainly, they're, these are ongoing maintenance projects. Maintenance is just a really important component of the infrastructure and, and the cost of the infrastructure that we own. So, um, every year, we identify projects and then, uh, work as a group to kind of determine where they're gonna, going to be at. The sewer lining project, uh, we're still working on the location for that. Sewers that are very good candidates to be lined are usually a concrete pipe, where there may be some corrosion at the top of the pipe, but the integrity is still there and it's round. It won't, it won't fix a bad spot, like a drop or something, we still, still do a spot repair. So we haven't done a lot of those, this will be probably the third one. We have gone back with our camera to inspect how the previous projects have worked out, and they, they look good. So that's one that, uh, maybe bring a little attention to. The other one is, um, the manhole rehab, you'd be surprised how many brick manholes that are still in town. So there's a couple of different processes to restore those and reduce the inflow and infiltration. So that's just highlighting a couple of the projects, the rest are, are ongoing maintenance that, that we do.
Okay. Any questions for Mark? Thanks, Mark. Okay, if not, um, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item C is a motion to approve Leroy and Sons Valley Contracting BD Construction Services, Service Signing Lakeside Environmental Cleveringa Excavating and Able Drainage and Excavating as subcontractors for the 2023 North Y Gateway Improvement Project. Motion made by Tracy. Second by Bill. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item eight, Department Head Reports, Planning Department, Adam.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, the March permit report is out for your viewing pleasure. With temperatures increasing, inspections and permitting has greatly picked up the beginning of April here. Some items for development, Planning Department has been assisting Beck Engineering along with Quickstar, as well as the West Eighteenth Street Commercial Subdivision, west of Casey's, on some respective development agreements and planning requirements. Um, in conjunction with Spencer Fire, uh, Spencer Planning, Spencer Planning Department, posted, uh, property for unsafe, to occupy following a fire on the, with the structure and the premises. Once again, I'd like to plug for the May History Month, uh, 2023 Lecture Series. I was able this time to be prepared, and I had, uh, agenda notice outside the door on the table with the speakers. It'll be Tuesday and Thursday evenings throughout the month of May in the council chambers at five thirty PM. Other than that, uh, Department is performing inspections as they come in and assisting the developmental, developmental needs of the community. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Brian.
Thank you. Adam, at the next council meeting, I would appreciate an update on the land, the hundred acres that we purchased west of town. If you could provide an update with where we're at currently and what, uh, your team is working on, uh, for the future goal that we set, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, and you're, are you, are you referencing a marketing standpoint, or?
I think just any general update of what, uh, movement has been, uh, in the last year and what your team is currently working on is what I would like to hear about.
Sure, that can be done.
Okay. Thanks, Brian. Thank you, Adam.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Sarah Beth, Library Director, is not with us tonight, but she did submit a written report. So, uh, Fire Department, Chief Condon.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, citizens of Spencer. March has definitely come in like a lion, it's going out like a lion for sure, right? Your Fire Department answered thirty-one calls for EMS and services that include syncable episodes, suicide attempts, difficulty breathing, uh, active blue code, seizures, falls, diabetic reactions, and stomach pain. Uh, this March, your Fire Department answered fifteen fire calls, uh, a mutual aid fire with festoria, basement fire in our local, uh, city, as well as ordnance, our odor investigations, as well as a couple of car crashes, car fires, as well as a DOA body removal. Our ambulance in-house answered six different calls with a couple of, uh, featured calls of, uh, possible stroke, uh, chest pain, weaknesses, and falls. Under training, uh, we take a lot of pride in our training program. Under the EMS side of the house, we have advanced EMT skills, advanced, with the advanced EMT skills, it's, uh, the different medications that these, uh, advanced DMTs will be allowed to give, as well as, uh, the exam that they took. And they also had an in-house radioactive blast, uh, injuries as a training class. Next, uh, planning for secession, we have officer training. And we have three of our members currently taking an officer training class, and this is a self-paced, online class. And, uh, these three individuals are spending a couple hours, uh, a week doing this. Lastly, on the fire side, we had training under fire alarm panels. How do we turn off that rotten buzzer, right? And then hazmat refresher, as well as RIT, uh, RIT, which is how do we move a down firefighter if in need? Lastly, under special duties, Family Fest, one of the best events in Clay County. This is where we, every agency can do some great recruiting. Had the honor of, uh, standing honor guard, as well as a flag ceremony for Butch Cirque, a forty-plus-year, uh, member of our Fire Department. And then lastly, uh, we did a standby for, uh, PD at a recent incident. And those are a couple of, uh, the service calls hosted by your Fire Department. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Police, Chief Warburton?
Good evening. Uh, the Spencer Police Department responded to eight hundred and fifty-three calls for service the month of March, and we made twenty-eight arrests. Uh, the Clay County Communication Center, uh, answered or placed two thousand six hundred and fifteen calls, phone calls, and three hundred and ninety-one of those were nine-one-one calls. Uh, March fourth, the Police Department participated in Family Fest, um, that was well-attended. We always kind of gauged the attendance by how many stickers and suckers we gave out that day, so, uh, just over a thousand. So, uh, it was well-attended, so it was a good time, uh, by the officers out there. We always enjoy, um, talking with the, the young kids. March ninth, uh, we participated in the disaster tabletop here at, in the council chambers, uh, put on by Emergency Management, and so that was well-attended. Uh, I think, uh, the mayor really appreciates that, and it really helps all of the departments, um, coordinate their efforts, that's for sure. Uh, March twenty-first and twenty-third, we had, uh, department-wide training here at the Police Department, where defensive tactics, pepper ball, um, and as well as we had Behavioral Health Coordinator Jill Barr, brought in several of the mental health, uh, service partners in the local area, discussed with officers, their, uh, the local services, uh, that they can provide and help our department with. Uh, March twentieth through the twenty-fourth, we had four officers go through crisis intervention training. Now, this is a school designed to help law enforcement improve, uh, communications with someone going through a mental health crisis. Uh, this class, uh, was put on by, uh, former officers of the San Antonio Police Department. So, uh, Care Connections, uh, got a grant for this, and, and we really appreciate all the work that they did in, in getting the officers to this training. In fact, this training was, uh, so valuable that I, I'd like to see, and it's gonna be a goal for every officer in our, uh, Police Department to go through this training, uh, in the next couple of years, so... But Care Connections did a awesome job putting on that class and getting the speakers here. Uh, March thirtieth, we had, uh, dare graduation, so we had a hundred and ninety-two, uh, students graduate, uh, fifth graders graduate, uh, that class, so kudos to Officer Hanson and Kearney for, uh, teaching, uh, our fifth graders. Uh, lastly, for those that didn't make the public safety meeting tonight, um, Iowa Great Lakes Lutheran, uh, came to the police, or came to the Police Department and, and requested a, a speed zone out there for First English Lutheran Church, or school, um, for a reduction in the speed zone out there. And so we contracted with Bolton Mink to, to perform, uh, a speed study, uh, which indicated a speed zone. Basically, they're gonna continue the thirty-five mile per hour zone on East Eighteenth Street, out seven hundred feet. So basically, taking that thirty-five zone all the way out to the east edge of that, of the, uh, school property out there, uh, and then switching over to the forty-five, so, um, pretty minor up there. But it also indicated on Tenth Avenue East, uh, from East Eighteenth Street to East Milwaukee, that's currently a thirty-five mile per hour zone, of course, except for the school, twenty mile per hour zone when flashing sign, right? And they want to reduce that speed zone from thirty-five down to thirty. Now, their speed zone indicated that there was a lot of traffic, and the traffic just wasn't moving that fast. It just wasn't moving that fast, and I think a lot of variables, um, because of the school zone, because we have a radar sign, um, up in that area, and we have a lot of pedestrian traffic coming across. There's a lot of kids coming across, uh, that intersection. So I think the culmination of all of that kind of reduces that, the driver's intention there to go a little fast, so they, they all slow down and take their time to that area. And lastly, uh, the TEEP study, result of the TEEP study that we had down on the south, uh, south end of town, um, they, DOT recommended a speed zone change from the South T all the way to Eleventh Avenue Southwest, on Eleventh Street Southwest there, um, to the Spidey L corner. So the South T to Spidey L corner there, uh, they want to reduce that speed zone down to a forty mile per hour zone instead of the current forty-five right now, which I don't think you're gonna see, um, uh, really, it's not gonna be much driver education in that area. There's a lot of cars in that area as well, it's congested down there. I don't think drivers will even notice the, the reduction of the speed. So, but just wanted you guys to know that that'll be coming up in the, in another council meeting.
And we'll also be seeing some restriping down there.
Yes, restriping that'll take place down there, if everybody can remember, that's when the DOT and Dakin Schultz came in, talked about that, basically, there's gonna be some turn lanes that are gonna be put down in there, especially, you look at the McDonald's intersection down there, there's gonna be specific turn lanes, uh, north and southbound there, with one through lane going through, and try to reduce some of that. So it's all gonna be restriping, but that's gonna come up here, uh, right away this construction season, so, all gonna be paint. The Menards intersection will be one, where you'll notice a big difference, basically, where you come to a stop now, coming out of Menards, that's gonna be basically one car length out farther into that intersection, in an attempt to get drivers to be able to see the oncoming cars more directly, and, uh, reduce some accidents in that area, so. Any questions?
Questions?
I do. Can you share with us, um, the K-9 competitions that were just...
Yes, uh, so, yeah, so, um, Officer Westfall... first place in the, in the team competition with our K-9, as well as Deputy Heck took first place overall. So those two guys pushed their K-9s extremely well. They are very dedicated to them, and in fact, we had Leadership Spencer in today, we did a K-9 demonstration for them, and literally it takes thirty seconds per car. I think our K-9 found two, there was two hides on five separate cars, and he cleared that and marked it in fifty-four seconds, all five cars, so extremely fast. And those, those guys push each other, you know, when, when half a point separates first and third and all that, that's, they're, it's, they're dedicated, yeah.
That's great.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Public Works, Mark.
The Street Division has started street sweeping last week in earnest, so you'll see the sweeper out. Whenever we sand the streets, we have to pick it back up most of the time, so it's kind of a end result of the winter season. We continue the, the pothole battle, however, we're getting a little more favorable weather for that, so hopefully we can make some gains. In addition to the weather being a little nicer, we're going to start blading the gravel alleys. It works pretty well, we use one of the park departments, it's a small blade with a scarefire or a leveller with that and a small tractor, that seems to work better than the motor grader with the larger mow board, there wasn't quite enough room to swing that. That also segues to the same maintenance on the gravel roads. Soon as we get the maintenance, the frost out of it, we can start the maintenance on them, otherwise it's just kind of moving slop around, so we hope to, hope to see that project go smoothly. We started at the tree site, screening material there this week, so we were able to get the frost out of that pile. Future projects as we work forward, there's always a lot of sign work to do in the spring following the winter, some projects we may have put off due to frozen ground, not being able to move, remove the posts. We're working with the identified seal coat street maintenance items that we talked about earlier, and formulating a plan for the asphalt maintenance. And the Public Works Department itself, the locates are starting to pick up just because of the season change, just that general office traffic, the same. The Palo Alto County Transfer Station had a fire issue last weekend, so we will see more traffic into the landfill. They'll have to drive trucks directly to our landfill to follow, make that work, so. That is all for the evening, to keep it brief unless there's questions.
Okay. Any questions for Mark? Thanks, Mark. Bob, Fullheart is not here tonight for the Park Report Golf Course, Brian.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Currently starting to have a lot of our seasonal staff come back on board. Our clubhouse is now open every day. The weather has improved quite a bit. I think back in January, early February, the mayor had asked me to make a prediction on when I thought the golf course was going to open, and I said March twenty-ninth at that time. And I think a lot of people all said May first, it would probably be closer, but we're finally going to be there. On Thursday, our driving range will be open, and on Friday morning, we'll open the golf course for the 2023 season, so missed it by, by a few days, but it's better than May first. Right now, we're just trying to get things cleaned up on the outside of the course, probably start getting some mowing done on Thursday or Friday, and hopefully get ready to see a lot of golfers on this Easter weekend. That's all I got, unless there's any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Brian, and thank you for getting the golf course open. Much appreciated. Okay, City Attorneys Report.
Thank you, Mayor. March was unusually busy month, about thirty-eight hours on various city projects. The positive aspect of that, I think, is that five of the drivers were development projects and projects leading to growth. Those included the Quick Star, final steps to get the North Y Gateway Project moving forward. Did some work assisting the county with the IGL Iowa Great Lakes Trail Extension, which is going to happen this summer. Worked with the, as Adam mentioned, a possible development on Fairgrounds property, and also on your discussion of a possible sale of a lot from the Three Pints property. Worked with Jessica as she's working to find the best candidates for the new fire chief. Of course, we're, we've been working on the Semrise issues. And the Planning Department, I are continuing to wrestle with the Casky Mobile Home Park. Now that the, the weather's improving, that's probably going to be a focus of activity again. Any questions?
Okay. Thank you, Don. Human Resources, Jessica.
Good evening. In the month of March, along with my usual stuff, city employees continued to work through the performance review process, so I always appreciate their efforts there. They're all doing a great job. Recruiting efforts included filling forty-four of our seasonal positions, so I've been shuffling a lot of paperwork. We welcomed DeeDee Overbeck to the Admin Assistant Position in City Hall, and Matt Wentz started today in the Street Department, so big welcome to them. Open positions, we only have a few, the fire chief, as Don mentioned, is open. Cover letters and resumes accepted through April thirtieth. We have one full-time street maintenance position, and four seasonal in the Aquatic Center at the admissions desk is all we have remaining there, so if anyone's interested, the citizens can go to our careers page and look at the details and apply there. We held our Quarter, Quarter One All Staff on St. Patty's Day, so we had a contest on who could wear the most green and had good participation, so. We also had the department heads come in and give updates, which is a new item on the agenda, and that went very, very well, and I appreciate their participation. And I was welcomed on to the Iowa Disaster Human Resource Council and attended their first virtual meeting. It's part of our local initiative that the mayor started, and Sharifa and Nancy Nave and I have been working on community initiatives to funnel the resources and any volunteer efforts in the community, make sure they're organized and streamlined in case of a community disaster. So they also put me on, you know, new people on, on committees and councils, they ask you to volunteer a lot, so I'm on their Volunteer and Donations Management Committee, which has a lot of good resources that we can use, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel here. And I'll be attending the Red Cross Training Event on Emotional and Spiritual Collaborative Care, which is a mouthful, but that's next week in Des Moines. Also, next week, I'll go to the annual Iowa Employer Conference in Altoona and attend workshops on their topics. They're going over typical recruitment, engagement, retention, legal compliance, employee wellness, and leadership KPIs are their focus this year. And we did have to reset our safety days without injuries counter on the thirty-first, so we're all just going to pick up that momentum and, and see if we can beat our last record, which I think was four-hundred-and-forty-six days, so that's where we're at. Any questions?
Any questions?
All right.
Thank you, Jessica. Engineers Report, Jim.
Good evening again. Just a quick update on a few projects that are starting. The Twenty-Fifth Street Southwest Sewer Project's going to start back up next week. They're going to test the pipe they've laid so far and then, and then carry on with that. I think where they ended, they're about twenty-five percent done, so hopefully the weather holds for them and they can get going. You may have noticed on West Fourth Street, some of the trees came down. They're, they're not ready to start that project just yet, but because it's DOT money, we're required to remove the trees prior to April one in case they are a bat nesting site, so that's why those trees came down. And there were a few trees in the North Y Project that came down too, little ones. The North Y Project contractors indicated, the dirt contractors indicated, he'd like to start as soon as the dirt is suitable. That's always a good question, when, when does that happen? It's not now, there's still, still some frost in the ground, and so the dirt's kind of pasty, but I anticipate that happening probably toward the end of this month. They'll get started on that, do the dirt work, and then the underground utility guys will have at it for a good, solid month, probably. And then, I talked a little bit about the tennis courts, not sure when that start is, but it sounds like earlier in the summer, more likely than later.
Good.
And that's all I have, unless you have questions.
And, and you did say bat nesting.
Bats, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they're, and apparently they don't think we're smart enough to figure out which trees there's bats in, so.
Good to know.
You just can't cut them down in the summertime during the construction season.
On that, you said West Fourth, did you mean East Fourth?
I did mean East Fourth, sorry.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Okay. Good catch, Tom.
I hadn't seen any trees coming down on West Fourth, so I assumed.
Yeah. They didn't have any bats.
So did we.
Yeah, okay.
There's no reason to take them down here.
All right. City Managers Report, Dan.
I have a couple things tonight. I attended a meeting today with representatives of the county, and Donovan was involved, but there's a federal grant to install electric vehicle charging stations and using federal money, and the county's kind of running lead on this grant application, so we just started meeting and identifying potential locations and public ground to put these in, and there'll be more with that later, but just wanted to give everybody a heads-up that this grant's available, and we'll be, we'll be participating in some way later, but this will come about later, once we get things more finalized. We just had our first meeting today, so not a lot is known right at this point. Second thing I have is I was at a City Manager Conference last week, and one of the topics of conversation was some of the legislative issues that the state's trying to do, and it sounds like the good news is that the House and the Senate can't get their property tax bills lined up to where they all agree, so maybe nothing will happen this year. No promises, they said, but it's looking more and more like they aren't going to be able to get together to get anything done this year, but next year being an election year, look out, it'll come back again. One of the things the City Managers talked about is trying to get help from other sources like engineering groups, economic development groups, Professional Developers of Iowa, any of those people that do work for the city, because if we get our funds cut too much, you won't have work, so that's a good thing. And, and the other thing that the league is draw, is driving is they're going to do some educational materials and marketing about basically what you get for your property taxes, your police protection, your fire protection, and all of that, and I think they, the, if the legislature keeps talking about their number-one issue they hear about is property taxes, maybe the general public should be aware of what they're getting for their money, and that's one of the things they're putting together, some videos that, once they get done, we'll distribute them on our social media and, and wherever else we can get them out there, so. Good news and bad news, that's all I have tonight.
Any questions for Dan? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I got a question for Dan.
Yes.
Is, is the grant for the electric vehicle, is that so much for you, station, or is it just a dollar amount, and we, then we decide how far the money goes?
I'm not a hundred percent sure, but it's, it's, the, it's, I think it's the latter. It, the minimum grant award is five-hundred thousand. I think the engineers we were talking to today said we should shoot for more like seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand, which I don't know how many that buys, they said a lot, whatever that means.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I think that, that, that grant is, is a good one to pursue, at least to look at, and it's, it's good to see that there are some federal dollars that at least are available to rural areas like, like ours, because at one point, they were all tied to four-lane highways, and cities and communities on those four-lane highways. So this is a good development, I think, and it'll be interesting to see how this goes as we pursue it. Okay, under the Mayor's Report, I just have one item tonight, and that is, last year, we had the first city cleanup day in conjunction with Earth Day, started on, as it will this year, April twenty-second, and go throughout the next weekend through April thirtieth, so it will encompass two weekends. Last year, we had fifteen to twenty different groups that cleaned up various public areas within the community. We had church groups, business groups, service organizations, you name it. I mean, people were, were really very active and forthcoming to come and help clean up the community. And basically, the organizational part of this was done by Mary Beth, and Teresa, I think, helped a great deal last year with this as well. And City Hall will, will take the lead in organizing this. So if you have a group that would be interested in helping with a little, a little spring cleanup of public areas, we would appreciate it very much. And what you would need to do is call City Hall, and City Hall will have the list of various places that you can clean up, and will provide the garbage bags, will provide the disposable gloves for people to use, and so forth. We also have access to our environmental trailer, which has all of those things, it also has the metal pickers that make it pretty easy to use. It also has vests in case you would like to, to use those. And the city, the Parks Department will come around and pick up the trash, so you don't have to dispose of it, you just have to put it in the bags, tie up the bags, and the Parks Department will come around and get that trash picked up. So really appreciate the public's help this year, really appreciated it last year, and hopefully we can expand upon it this coming spring. So that will start April twenty-second and go that weekend, and then the following last weekend in April as well. But if you want to get going during the week, of course, you could do that as well. So just call City Hall, and we'll get it all organized. Okay, Counseling Committee Reports.
Oh, it looks like all we have tonight is the regular council meeting in two weeks on Monday the seventeenth.
Okay. Okay, Item Thirteen, I entertain a motion to approve the bills and claims.
Go ahead.
Motion made by Bill.
Second.
Donovan got you?
Donovan got you? Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion's approved. Item fourteen, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Yeah.
What's that?
Fifteen first.
Oh, we could go to fifteen first. We could do that. Yeah, then that's, that's a good idea.
That whole game of your life.
Well, maybe that's why we did it that way. Okay, we'll go to Item Fifteen first, and that's other business and opportunity to address the council. And we have a, a little bit of new language that we added to this, and we, we've never really had an issue with people addressing the council like, like some cities and school boards have in the past, but we just wanted to add a little bit of language to, for anyone who wants to address the council. So this is the language. Any member of the public who would like to address the council for items not on the agenda are asked to approach the podium and wait to be recognized. After recognition, the person shall state their name and address for the record, and statements or questions are limited to five minutes. So that's about the only real difference is we, we want you to limit your comments or questions to around five minutes. So is there anyone who would like to address the council? You've got up to five minutes. Okay, all right.
That's got to be disappointing after all that, isn't it?
I know, it is, yeah, it is, okay. Now, we'll, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Iowa Code Section twenty-one point five, one C, to discuss strategy with council concerning litigation. Motion made by Tom. Second by Tracy. Any discussion?
Don, you approve that this meets the standards?
Yes, I do.
I don't know if- Second by Tracy. Any discussion?
Don, you approve that this meets the standards?
Yes, I do.
I don't know if you heard, Don, but he said yes.
Thank you.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Pos nay? Motion carries. Will be in closed session as soon as the chief clears every.